...at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. We began tonight's meeting at 6:40 in executive session, and we are now in open session. We're going to go now to public comments. Any public comments this evening from the board?
I have a couple. One, I wanted to thank the DPW for all the work they did on the doubleheader kind of storm we had this weekend, brief intermission on Sunday morning. But I was out on the road 5:00 AM Monday morning to go to work, and I had no problem getting around. So, thank you very much, and thank you in advance for probably what you're going to have to do tonight. I hope tonight's storm is, has as least impact as possible. And the other thing I just want to say is today is National Law Enforcement Day, so I want to thank and extend my appreciation to all those in law enforcement for all they do.
Thank you, Simon Emke.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will echo the DPW comments. I want to shout out to Bill Bernard, the DPW Director, and his crew for doing an excellent job on Sunday for both Act One and Two, as Selectwoman Emke has noted, also for the Law Enforcement Day. I also want to remind people that tomorrow is the Water District Special Meeting, which is at 6:00 PM at the Water District Headquarters, which is on Mass Ave. Again, people who are eligible to attend are any Lunenburg voter who lives in the district. You do not have to be a customer of the Water District, as long as you live in the district and are a registered voter. There are three articles on the warrant for tomorrow, so it should not be that long a meeting, but I do encourage people to go, and I know their last two meetings were not televised of the Commissioners, so I try to keep people informed of these, and I hope to see people out there tomorrow. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I just, the, I would normally be announcing a pancake breakfast tomorrow, but the pancake breakfast is canceled. So, no pancake breakfast at the Lunenburg Adult Activity Center tomorrow because of the weather. I'm peeking ahead a little bit with this announcement. It's sort of a committee report, but also an announcement. One of the discussion topics at today's Council on Aging meeting was the surveys for the Master Plan. There's going to be another Master Plan meeting at which the public is invited. There are two sessions of it on February 1st at the Lunenburg Adult Activity Center. One's from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, the other one is from 6:30 to 8:30 PM. And just by way of reminder, that's not two sections of the same meeting. That's a repeat. It's a redundancy. It gives two opportunities to come and discuss the same subject matter. So, you only need to plan on being at one. 4:00 was a more friendly time for, you know, the senior population and others, for whatever reasons, if they have evening plans. As part of this today, though, paper versions of the surveys have, we're now in Survey Two. So, Master Plan Steering Committee has issued one survey already. A second survey is out. Over Under, who's the consultant sort of coordinating and guiding us through this process, is looking to have those survey, the second round of surveys responses in by the 25th of January. For those who would prefer to fill them out by paper, they're available at the Adult Activity Center. And one of those discussions that came up, points that came up is that underrepresented so far in the responses are responses from the senior population. Now, they're about a third, they're like 30% of our population, and they're nowhere near 30% of the responses up to this point. So, I think it's important to emphasize and encourage the senior population to get their voices heard in these surveys. And you can either do that on planlunenburg.org and take the survey that way, or you can pick up a paper version. You can, I found it advantageous to look at the paper version in advance before going and answering on the online version, because you get a chance to think about it a little bit. But I just want to push that, and I'll be pushing it at subsequent meetings as well that really need the voices of the senior population in the survey results, because we want the Master Plan to reflect the broad cross-section of the town population.
What day of the week is February 1st? Oh, okay. I thought you knew.
I do not.
That's fine.
No, no, that wasn't me sighing. That was me breathing after that statement.
That was a hell of a public comment, by the way.
Yeah, yeah, that was, I know.
Can you make an appointment with us next time?
Even knowing, even I didn't know it was going to be that long. Thursday, February 1st.
And how does one go about getting the survey if not on Facebook?
It's online. It's on, Heather, Town Manager, Madam Town Manager, if you could?
Yes, it is on the town website, and Karen McCarthy is going to be putting that printable version as well on the town website. So, if anyone wanted to actually print it out, so they could have that option.
So, do you just go to the main page, or do you have to go to like the committee to get to the survey?
I think you can go to the town page as well as the planlunenburg.org page.
Okay.
It's right on the first, yeah, homepage.
Okay. Excellent. All right. Any other public comments from the board? All right. If we have any public comments from the public this evening? All right. Two announcements. Just noting that due to the weather, the Town Manager is remote with us this evening. Also, Selectman Nizzolo, due to his military training, had a conflict and is unable to attend with us this evening, but we look forward to seeing him next week. Communications from other boards. To the Town Manager, do you have any additional announcements?
Just that if the, if the weather does impact, that we're able to open on time tomorrow with both town offices and the Lunenburg Adult Activity Center, there would maybe a delay. If there's, we can't clear the, the DPW facilities, can't clear the parking lots and sidewalks, or there is any loss of power, but a notice would be put up.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Communications from other boards. So, this is for the Town Manager. This probably could be an action item. We received, I know I communicated with you earlier today about this, asking you some questions, but I'll tell you what the request is. We are coming due this November to renegotiate, or that's the expiration date, of the municipal aggregation agreement for the electricity for town. And the School Committee has a request, which is that they need to plan for utility costs for the next fiscal year, and is there any way that our broker can provide them with some guidance on kind of what that target may need to be?
I would have to ask the broker to, like, I believe we're expected to go out to bid probably this spring for those rates. So, we wouldn't, in the market, the way it is, I don't know if they would be able to even predict what those rates would be. We've locked into a really good rate for the last three years, so obviously I would expect there would be increases on that. And, I mean, the school department obviously has electricity costs, but it would also impact the town side as well with all our accounts.
Yeah. So, I think the request is just if we can give any kind of guidance that we have as they work on their budget, whatever we're plugging in for ours for utility, if we can just share that information with them.
Certainly.
All right. Thank you. Any other communications from other boards? All right. Okay. We're going to go to interviews, appointments, reappointments, and resignations. So, the Town Manager is presenting to us tonight a request to ratify appointment of the Facility Superintendent, Don Gagny. We also received an email related to this earlier today, as Mr. Gagny has been working for the town for about two years, but I'll turn it to the Town Manager for additional information.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I will just ask the board that you ratify the appointment of Don Gagny to the position of Facility Superintendent. As the Chair said, Don has worked for the town since 2021, when he was hired as our Facility's Custodian, which the title is misleading. It's not a custodial position. It's really a technician position, but that's something we would have to address through the collective bargaining agreement to change that title. So, shortly after being hired as the Custodian, the Facility Superintendent, Kit Walker, went out on medical leave, and at that time, Don stepped up to the plate and fulfilled the duties of the Facility Superintendent, and he has continued to do so during our search for the, when we were without a Facilities Director. And when Kit retired, he resumed that interim role as Facility Superintendent. We, over the course of this time, we've received about 50 applications, not obviously all qualified applicants, but five interviews were conducted, Don being one of them, and Don has continued to fulfill this role during this time. And the Facilities Director recommended, and the Assistant Town Manager and I agree that Don is qualified to do this job, and we've offered the permanent position to him. I respectfully ask the board ratify this appointment tonight. And I also want to thank Don for his patience during this process and congratulate him on this promotion.
All right. Any questions for the Town Manager related to this request to ratify? Or comments?
I have none.
None. All right. It's always good to see people get promoted from within, you know, provides, you know, not all roles have a pathway to advancement, but it's, it's good to see someone kind of grow with the town. And as I recall, Don came to us with many years of experience from Fitchburg, so I definitely look forward to, to this new role. I move to ratify the Town Manager's appointment of Don Gagny as Facility Superintendent.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All right. I can do all in favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. All right.
A lot easier that way, isn't it?
It is. The motion passes. So, Mr. Gagny's ratified, and when do we expect his start date to be in this new role officially?
Officially, it would be this week.
Okay. All right. Excellent.
When was it?
This week.
This week.
Yep. All right. I'm sure, I'm sure tomorrow. All right. Going into current business. So, we had, and I want to introduce this first one. We've received a series of requests, emails, complaints, from a resident, Mr. Burden, who lives up Courtland Circle, on Flat, off of Flat Hill. And so, and then they also, he also submitted a request for us to conduct a financial audit of the Police Department. I extended an invitation to Mr. Burden and his wife, Jen, to meet with us this evening to discuss all of their requests with us, to get an official response from the board. This was in line with their request to meet with us, and when that was extended, they, they denied the request. Fall communication went out, just encouraging them to come, and then they also denied the second communication as well. So, I want to be limited in how much we talk specifically, but I do want, I added this to the agenda tonight, because I think that we, I think it would be prudent for us to speak in a clear voice when it comes to the Town Manager and staff, because it's, the requests are beginning to consume a lot of time. And, and my preference here is I think that we need to advise, I would like for this board to advise the Town Manager to refer this resident back to this board for many of the requests that are coming forward. I am fully confident that Heather and her team are able to manage the day-to-day type work, but, you know, what I want to be mindful of is that regardless of whether the resident is right or wrong, when they send a communication out to their government, that they expect a response. And, and when you send over 500 emails, there's not going to be a response to most of your communications. And I think it would be prudent for us to advise the Town Manager to refer Mr. Burden back to us to be able to address some of his concerns. Overwhelmingly, to summarize, most of the complaints that we've received from Mr. Burden are related to him living in a condo association.
Uh-oh.
Our screen in here is restarting, so we're going to pause for a moment.
All right. Mr. Chair, I have to deal with something, as I told you before. So, the question is, do you want me to come back here? Do you want me to join?
If you can join remotely, then I can.
Okay. I will join remotely. Okay.
All right. For those at home, let's just recess for a moment. Take about two minutes here. Let's figure out what's going on with our screen in the room.
Yep.
Thanks. All right.
Drive safe.
As my friend would say, drive fast, take chances.
No, no, that's not, no, you don't do that tonight.
Come on, man.
So, are we on TV?
Yes.
Okay.
Are we muted? No. You just won't see it. Facebook, Zoom.
Zoom is how.
Oh, so Heather can't?
Heather can.
You have no connection with Heather? Okay.
All right. So, we're having a technical issue that we don't know how long it's going to resolve, right?
So, like the snowstorm, we have an intermission.
Terrible music to play.
We have an intermission while Tom drives home.
It's the computer refreshing.
It's Microsoft.
Yep.
So...
Apple doesn't do this. All right. For those at home, what happened is that we are using a screen to communicate via Zoom with the Town Manager. Also, Mr. Alonso indicated that he needs to join the rest of the meeting remotely. So, our screen in room is somehow rebooting. It's refreshing, so we're just going to give it a minute to let it reboot, and if it doesn't, then we'll pick up the conversation, keep going.
The perpetual spinning wheel of the refresh.
The window circle.
Uh, yeah.
See, this is one of those moments, like, I don't got any good jokes, but I don't have any on TV.
You know, I watched the Planning Board last night, and they had Zoom problems. They couldn't, I guess the last two Planning Board meetings, there was no Zoom. I don't know exactly what the issue was, but there was an issue that prevented them from having their meeting on Zoom.
Yep. On a night like tonight, where I'm sure many people are probably watching on Zoom, because they don't want to come out, you know?
I wonder if, I wonder if she's lost power or something, you know, like her internet.
Yeah. I'll just text, I'll text her as well.
I think I saw what looked like a plow out there already. I saw flashing lights.
Oh, this is encouraging. I'm seeing numbers go up. Oh, 100%. I like that.
I hope we don't lose power.
Please keep your computer rolling.
There's a picture now.
For a second only, it says Vodafone. You know Vodafone from Europe. You're looking at me confused.
Yes, I am.
It's like their AT&amp;T.
Okay.
Probably closer related to their Samsung or Google.
I guess I can move down.
Oh, yeah. There's definitely a difference.
It's cold already.
There's definitely a difference in the chairs. In some meetings, chair from the middle, whereas we tend to chair from the end.
Oh, really? I've only seen the end.
I think, I think ZVA's middle.
Oh. I haven't seen many of those. Now, we probably have to update Zoom as well as...
Yep. Zoom update. All right. So, to the Town Manager, can you hear us?
I can.
All right. And to PAC, we still have a live feed here? I think they said yes. Okay. So, we're picking back up on the conversation related to clear guidance to the Town Manager. So, the summary, because the resident has placed all these emails, has communicated via email, these are all in the public record, and so I feel more comfortable sharing the gist of what the complaints are. The gist of the complaints are related to living in a, in the village at Flat Hill. It's complaints about the neighbor, it's complaints about snow, complaints about ability to use guns, complaints about how the police respond to the private neighborhood, complaints about the Chief of Police, complaints about the Town Manager regarding how they've responded to the complaints. The resident has met with the Town Manager, I believe, twice. They've met with the Chief of, once? Once. They've met with the Chief of Police on a couple of occasions, and again, we've received back and forth over 500 emails last calendar year. So, the most recent complaint that came in, you know, yesterday or so was related to snow removal, in which the resident felt as if some snow removal activities happened that were vindictive or along those lines, retaliatory against them. They felt as if their condo association created a public safety issue that the town should address with how much snow accumulated before snow removal occurred. From my viewpoint, I think that I've communicated with this resident, I've met with them, I've talked with them, we've, we've communicated over the phone at least 10 times. I personally have received over 300 text messages. It seems as if we need to be clear that what's occurring there, and I know that the guidance has come from the police, it's come from the Chief, it's come from the Town Manager, that when a person lives in a condo association, and we have a couple here in town, that the condo association is basically the overall property owner of record for the whole property, and that everyone who lives in that condo association has a beneficial interest in that condo association. There's a certain percentage of ownership of the association in addition to their ownership of their own, of their own home. But, but when it comes to snow removal, trash remediation, neighbor-to-neighbor disputes, living in a condo association, that is a civil relationship that an individual has with that condo association, and any complaints that come out of that need to be handled civilly, that they're not for the town to resolve. Are we...
I can't read it from here.
I can't read that from here. All right. They are for the, they're not for the town to resolve. The town does not engage in the inner workings of condo associations, that that dynamic is a civil dynamic. Trustees of condo associations have a fiduciary responsibility, and this comes out of mass general law, but they have a fiduciary responsibility over that association. There's rights and remedies afforded to members of condo associations related to the condo association in terms of how you pursue your trustees, how you can replace them, how you can vote them in, how you, how you yourself can run for office, but all encompassing, none of this has anything to do with the town of Lunenburg, the taxpayers of Lunenburg, the powers given to the Select Board, the powers given to any town office. So, I, I know that, I'm trusting that everyone is in agreement with everything I've said thus far, and that we want to give clear guidance to the Town Manager, that, that continued complaints from the resident related to our inaction over a civil matter, that we, we should refer, that the Town Manager should refer that resident to this board for conversation. So, that's what I'm looking for us to give, that clear guidance, and the hope here is that it empowers staff to have a standard response, that we don't have a resident who's being ignored, and that we have a path to get questions answered, but that is more mindful of staff time, which is something that we all pay for, and, and simply, we can't allocate time to respond to residents who email us five, six times a week. That, to me, is beyond, beyond what we've kind of designed our government to be able to do. So, I want to pause there, and I know that I haven't seen 95% of the communications that have come out over the last year, because I've been asked to remove from them, and I know that every other member of the board has, so I just want to pause to see if there's, see what the other, what the rest of the members' thoughts on this are.
Did you have any?
I think so. Speaking, let's start with the most recent request about the snow removal. I mean, I live in an HOA. We contract out for snow. Town does not plow our roads. Town has nothing to do with it. So, that, that, I think, is, is easy. I have seen a lot of these emails. I know the Town Manager has, has collected them all, so I can see ones that even came before I was on the Select Board. Honestly, I, it's not always clear to me what the request is. So, if you're asking, do I support taking the burden off of Town Manager, this, you know, staff? Yes. I don't, I don't know that we can do more, is the bottom line.
Yeah. I mean, here's one logistical issue with it. Yes, in spirit, I completely agree with that. I've already commented in the past how absolutely insane the amount of resources that are being dedicated to one individual. I mean, the guy is like 20% of a town of demand on resources. So, if, as far as referring it to us, the problem there is that unless we have a central point person to respond, I mean, we cannot, like, get into a group response, as you know, because we're going to have an open meeting law issue. You know, if we start getting into like a, like a, sort of a back and forth with all the Select Board members copied on it and everything.
My request is for him to appear before this board.
Oh, to appear in person?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Well, right. I mean, that's the thing, there has to be, right. I mean, if, to the extent that we can respond at all, it has to be done in an open session. And, you know, with you put that, the invitation was put out to do it tonight, and the, that was rejected. So, and you're right, to your point, I mean, as far as what the asks are, it's not always clear what the asks are. They seem like sort of random lashings out with no real, like, what we'd call in the law, a prayer for relief, like, what's the bottom line? What are you looking for, for a resolution? So, and, like, you've already touched at this. This is a condo associa, this is, this is a privately governed entity, and when people join a condo association, they contractually join that association freely, in some instance, waiving rights, you know? So, if we want to get, you know, talk about the gun thing, for example, yeah, whereas like a person, like a citizen just in town has the right to bear arms and carry a gun around. If a condo association is part of that condo association, you can't do that. If the condo association says you can't do that, and you voluntarily waive that right, then you can't do that. You're in violation of the condo association laws. Those are private rules. You can waive even constitutional rights. I mean, if you contractually say, I agree not to carry a gun around in public on the, on these grounds, you know, you can't then go assert your constitutional right to carry a gun around. You've contractually waived it. So, I don't know what they want, what he wants us to do about it, and, and it's sort of like, it's analogously, it would almost be like somebody working, or in a partnership, a business partnership of 10 people, say, and one partner or a junior partner has a complaint about how HR is treating them and wants the Select Board to do something about it, just because the business is located in Lunenburg. That's, that's analogous to this situation. So, we, there's not a lot, there aren't too many areas on which, that have been complained about on which we can take any action. So...
And I think that, you know, we're all more than willing to help every resident that we can. I mean, we know, you know, there's, but when it comes to neighbor-to-neighbor disputes, in many cases, we are pretty powerless. You know, the shortest distance between two points is a straight line. If you have a problem with your neighbor, knock on their door and try to resolve it, or ignore them. You know, but sometimes what happens in, in neighbor-to-neighbor disputes is they enlist the support of police to try to legitimize their side of an argument, and that seems to be what's... And that seems to be what's happening with the request to create police reports based on a non-police officer's perception of events, non-criminal things, that when reports come out, they say civil matter, you know, and so there's no additional notes, it's requests for there to be more notes, it's requests for police officers to amend their own police reports. So, I think that, um, we should be clear that going forward, when, if we have concerns, if the resident has concerns, we don't want to ignore them, but we should defer them back to meeting with us for us to try to answer them. Um, and I know that that's not the normal course of things, but I think on the backend, it will free, uh, a lot of time and resources that's currently being dedicated, uh, to the resident. Mr. Alonso, I know that you just joined in with us, did you want to chime in here? I'm not sure when you joined in.
Uh, we cannot hear you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just heard the latter part of that, I'm assuming it was the same topic?
Yes.
Than when I left the meeting, uh, in person. Just two short comments. Number one is, if an offer was extended to discuss this, and the offer, the invitation was not taken, I really have no inclination to speak to the topic in any regard. And the second point will be that, I think, in the last round of emails from this resident, the town manager's responses have been short and succinct, and if those are not answered, I would say that she should answer back with the same short and succinct things that, give me a list of grievances, otherwise, we can't go anywhere. And I do not agree they should be addressed back to the board. I think that they're being held, handled exactly where they should be, which is with the same response until the town manager's requests and questions get answered. That is my feeling about it.
All right. So, the other, the other part of this is a request for us to conduct a financial audit of the police department. That request is going nowhere with me. Does anyone have any desire to conduct a financial audit of the police department?
Uh, no.
No?
No.
No? No, all right, so that request is denied.
Uh, what is the basis of that request, by the way? What's the goal there?
The, the assumption is that there's embezzlement that's going on uh, between the police department and the trustees of the association, even though there's, you know, no communication, I mean, I, I didn't even know who the trustees were. I think the allegation was that me and, and Lieutenant Thibodeau, who have zero emails between us, that the two of us communicate, and that somehow we are friendly with the condo association, I couldn't name the trustees if you asked, um, and somehow we have all conspired over the last 10 years to embezzle money.
All right, so, for me personally, the next time we interact with George Burden, I have a Zalitmus test question, does he believe there was a moon landing?
Well, Mr. Chair, I just want to say one thing, and I want to caution the rest, you know, certainly, the whole board and everybody here, is that this is someone who, we, we give him a megaphone when we talk about these, and we take time away from our public meetings. I would, I would consider, or I would at least suggest, that the board not take these under advisement publicly, because they do not merit such attention, and certainly not such public attention.
Yep, I, I think that, what I, I think the town manager's answers to Mr. Burden, I agree with you on, on part of what you said, Mr. Alonso. I think the town manager's answers to Mr. Burt, to, to the, to the resident are succinct to the point, but I think that when there's a higher level of detail that's requested, I, I would prefer for the town manager to refer the resident to meet with us. Um, I don't know if the, if the resident will end up meeting with us, but I, I would rather take our time, which is, you know, certainly offered but not compensated versus the taxpayers' dollars, which, you know, I, when I think about the capacity of what the town manager can do in the course of a week, we think about the capacity of the chief of police, and, and when five hours plus are being dedicated to respond to a resident, I don't believe that that's in the public's interest. And so, I-
Well, I don't just, I don't disagree, but I would say that I would, I would recommend to the town manager, don't spend anywhere near that hour. Until you get answers, and I think that has been happening over the last course of interactions, is that I think the town manager has been very clear that you have to answer these questions, and it's a two-sentence thing, and it takes three minutes, and you don't answer everyone, you answer once a week, and it should take no more than 15 minutes a week at this point, until those questions get answered, or those forms get addressed as she has requested. So, I do not expect, nor, nobody should expect, you know, 30 emails a week to be responded to on the same subject over and over and over. That is just not the way any, the expectation anybody should have.
So, to the town manager, um, are we being clear enough with you on kind of our guidance going forward?
Yes, I mean, I, um, didn't have any expectation for as soon as responsibility. I think I have, uh, like, Mr. Alonso said, my responses have been clear, and what he needs to do in response to his complaint, which has not been followed through, so they'll continue that path forward.
I think anything beyond that, um, you know, I, I am happy to reschedule Mr. Burden to come and appear before this board, to ask us whatever question he wants. If he wants us to explain to him why something is not in our purview, I think that we can, we can certainly do that, but, um, you know, I just, I want to, I want to be sure that we are not expending more staff time when we have residents with real needs, uh, that are, that, things that are in our purview to address. All right. Any other comments on this topic before we move on?
Nope.
All right, um, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your participation, and to the resident, the invitation stands. Uh, you know, we are more than happy to meet with the resident to go over why we do, you know, government is, um, with the consent of the governed. And so, all of our powers, authorities, and duties are spelled out. And the ones that are not spelled out, we simply don't have. We just, we just don't have them. All right, next on our agenda, Class II Auto Dealer License Renewal for Autobahn 53 Chase Road. This is for Baker Enterprises doing business as the Autobahn located at 53 Chase Road. Um, you know, they reached out to the office, they were unable to get their requirements in, uh, in, in December. This is a business that has, um, has, this is an organization that's had business with us for, you know, roughly, what, 30-something years? And so, the, um, request is to approve Baker Enterprises, uh, for a Class II Auto Dealer License. And all documents has, have been submitted, and everything is in order.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Baker, Mr. Baker, as you indicated, has been a business owner, he's also a constable in town, he's been involved in business with the town in professional and private ways in many years, and I would recommend that we approve the Autobahn license as requested.
All right, would you like to make the motion, Mr. Alonso?
I thought I just did, but I moved that we approve the Class II Auto Dealer License Renewal for the Autobahn, uh, at 30, 53 Chase Road.
Second.
All right, any additional discussion? All right, it's going to be a roll call vote, Mr. Alonso.
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Emke?
Aye.
Mr. Franco?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. All right, it is approved, we will pass this down for signature.
So, Mr. Chair, have we now heard from all that we expect to for license renewals?
Um, no.
Okay.
No, we have not. To the town manager, have we heard anything from, um, have we received any information from ConRens?
They are not ready to reapply at this time.
Okay. All right. To the town manager, I want to, um, push the goal update to next week.
Okay.
So, next we have, so based on the calendar, and I'll turn to the town manager, based on the calendar, uh, we need to open the, the warrant, uh, today, and close the warrant on, uh, March 18th at 4:00 PM. And this is based on the kind of backwards planning of the deadlines to get to the, um, spring town meeting. So, if there's no questions about this, I will move to open the annual town meeting warrant, um, today, January 9th, and close the warrant on March 18th, 2024, at 4:00 PM.
Second.
All right, any additional discussion? All right, uh, all in favor, this is going to be Mr., um, Alonso?
Aye.
Ms. Emke?
Aye.
Mr. Franco?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. All right. For warrants, we have an accounts payable warrant in the amount of $1,850,331.23. While that is going down, do we have any action items? Committee reports, I'm assuming no and no.
Oh, I have a couple.
Oh, oh.
I don't know. Well, start of the year already, the school committee met, uh, last week on the 3rd. Um, so, as has been discussed in their, their committee meeting since October, November, the fiscal year '25 budget, and the impact not just of losing the SRF funds, but also the, um, increase in health insurance costs that the town is also facing. So, um, those health insurance costs are expected to be 8% to 10%. They won't know till end of February, early March, what that exact number will be. But at last week's meeting, the superintendent, um, presented a high-level overview of staffing reductions, um, to address the, the reduction in budget. This is based on worst-case scenario, which would be a 10% increase in health insurance. And across all the schools, including the central office, they're looking at cutting 28 positions right now, just blackboard, you know, back-of-the-envelope calculations. To their credit, they are being, and have been, since they became aware of this deficit, or the bigger cut in the budget than expected, um, they've been very transparent, and they've discussed it at every committee meeting, there's been newsletters from the superintendent, um, and they really encourage, um, people to, to get engaged, because they're going to want feedback, because cuts will be, um, will be needed. And they will know more as the, as they say, the unknown becomes known. Um, the next meeting, which is next Wednesday, the focus of that meeting will in fact be a discuss, discussion on the fiscal year '25 budget that will be presented by the superintendent. So, if you haven't been, um, following, that would be a great opportunity to, uh, to get caught up and, and watch that meeting and provide, uh, feedback.
Of those 28 positions, do they indicate how many of them are currently grant-funded, or are these positions that are currently fully funded?
No, it was just a one slide, and different categories, and, you know, X-plus positions. It's very, and, and the superintendent did comment that before anything else and any more details would be discussed in public, people that could be potentially impacted would be, you know, talked to, would be notified, so they don't find out, obviously, in a public meeting, that, that their position could be, could be cut. Um, but, even as far as the percent of, of positions potentially lost in this category, I mean, all of those details, that's, that wasn't part, but, of, some of the school committee members did, um, request additional details, so I would expect that to come out, um, as part of next week's discussion.
If you wouldn't mind, um, just at the next op, next meeting that you go to, if you wouldn't asking about just that level of detail, because I know that, um, you know, cutting 28 positions that are currently fully funded by the budget is to me a different conversation than cutting 10 positions fully funded by the budget and 14 that are grant-funded.
So, some, yeah, so some were going to be lost, losing SRF. Health insurance stays the same, that was a given, so, so those, my assumption is, those are built into that.
Okay, well, SRF is temporary, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, that was anticipated, some, some positions were going to be lost because of the loss of SRF, but this is just on top of that. Um, it's a, it's a big, it's a big difference. Um, I, at the meeting, the superintendent estimated loss of SRF alone maybe in the 8% to 12% position.
Okay.
Number.
So, SRF's accounting for 8% to 12%?
Roughly, I mean, that's really-
Of the 28, or in addition to the 28?
Um, no, I believe it's, I believe it's of the 28.
Okay.
She didn't specify, but they're, they're just, they're not breaking it out. This, this is where we are today, and this is where they have to go.
Got it.
Where they have to get to. So, so that is ongoing. The other update is, the stormwater task force met on December 28th. This was the first meeting since July. We elected a chair, so Tim, Tim Willsmer from the planning board is the chair. The DPW director, Bill Benard, gave a presentation, just the mission of the stormwater task force, what the, um, DPW has been, um, doing in terms of work and money spent, dealing with drainage and stormwater issues. We will be talking about stormwater utility. So, Bill Benard's trying to get, um, someone from, I believe, he's going to contact someone in Chelmsford who has a stormwater utility to come in, to talk to us, to give, give some information on, um, how they did that, what it looks like, and so on. Um, and our next meeting is scheduled for the next Thursday, uh, it's January 18th, which I think is a Thursday. So, we will be meeting monthly, um, from this point on. And that's it.
I do have one question for you on that, too.
Yeah.
You know, I know that we've had a lot of communication as of late, uh, well, just generally, uh, from the residents on Flat Hill, including some residents on Page Street, related to the amount of water. I, I would like to have a better understanding of, of how widespread the problem is in town, of, you know, in terms of if we had to prioritize, is that kind of the worst area, and that's, or is that on par with other areas, and maybe there's just less vocal residents? You know, just to get a picture of, of where we need to go, um, with some of this stuff, and how we can handle it.
Okay, you just reminded me of something else that came up in that meeting, which I think the town manager emailed us about earlier, but electric have been closed the last two rainstorms. We can thank beavers for that, we think, I mean, I guess we'll find out for sure tonight. But they did find, uh, they, they pulled out a log and other, I mean, so that, hopefully, that was the issue. It's been cleaned out, there's been, uh, you know, a grate or, um, to, to prevent a beaver from getting in there again. Um, so, hopefully, that, that was the issue, and it's not an infrastructure problem, yeah.
And then broadly speaking to the town manager, I think that there was also a request from the school committee that, you know, if we experience any of those DPW road closures, we know that during snow events, a lot is happening, there's a lot of moving parts, um, but the school's request is for us to send a communication to them, because it will impact buses.
That has been, um, discussed internally.
Okay.
Also?
Okay, uh, I already touched 80% of what I needed to touch. The, um, uh, master plan steering committee met last Thursday. Most of that meeting was about, uh, teeing up the, uh, well, first of all, doing the push on the surveys, making the effort to do the push on the second round of surveys, looking to have those in by January 25th, uh, and then teeing up the big meeting on February 1st. Those, again, two sessions, 4:00 to 6:00 PM, 6th, and then 6:30 to 8:30 PM. Uh, and just because it's at the Lunenburg Adult Activity Center, it's open to the public in general. It's not like a special session just for seniors, it's for the entire town. That's just the site of where it's going to be. So, other than that, I really have no updates, there, there, um, those are the only two meetings that happened since before the holidays.
Okay. I don't have any committee reports. All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may, just follow up on, on Ms. Emke's. I, uh, you know, the budget deficit that the school looks at, I mean, the, the town manager sent around an email regarding the governor's 9C cuts, and I'm just wondering if we have any, uh, notion, since that seemed to come out of the blue, do we have any notion that they're going to look deeper into this $1 billion supposed tax collection or deficit that the state is looking at that will eventually, will impact Lunenburg?
When I spoke with Representative Starsdale yesterday, there was no indication that these nine-seat cuts were coming, even to the delegation, it came as a surprise to them. And this is after a fall supplemental budget went through, that was, I believe, around $225 million per additional budget approvals of the state. So at this point, there's, that's an unknown. They don't know if there's going to be further cuts, if this is the extent of it, but it appears to be come out unscathed through this round of nine-seat cuts. It is limited to earmarks, and Lunenburg did not receive any earmarks in FY '24. So either thankfully or not thankfully at this point, and more, it looks like surplus cuts into agency budgets.
Do we have, when does the governor's, you know, proposed budget start, is it around now, the end of the month, right?
It is the weekend of the MMA conference, so the weekend of the 20th. That's when the governor announces.
I hope there are no more additional nine-seat cuts. Having looked for that in the past, it is not a fun time.
Correct. Yeah. Cutting state aid mid-year is a very dire endeavor.
I think, Mr. Alonso, what I, what I read in reports was that the state, in addition to the cuts, the state has a $915 million cost related to housing immigrants. And so, you know, it's almost a billion dollars in unanticipated costs, which I know the administration's saying that they can absorb it, and then, you know, a week later, we get hit with $375 million in nine-seat cuts.
Right.
Yep.
These cuts are, were being relieved due to the revenues being down for six straight months in a row, but I asked that same question, because I've been part of those calls, and read the budget impact from emergencies shelter, and that was a question I had, too, to just equate to that, that deficit, because the state is seeking funding from the federal government, but to date, there's funding, funding from the federal government, this impact.
All right.
I can certainly, I don't know the impact, the severity of the impact, but it can't be having a positive impact, let's put it that way. It's definitely having a negative impact on the budget in many places, not only Massachusetts.
Yep. All right. Any other committee reports this evening? All right. So, again, I'm trying to abbreviate us tonight just because of the weather. So what we will save for our meeting next week is to receive an update on the town manager's goals, we'll also review our own goals. We also have on the agenda for next week, ARPA update on where we're at with distribution, with the remaining balances, and I did get a request from selectman Emke on ARPA as well, as far as what we plan, how we plan on distributing the remaining funds. And then next week, we'll also save, I'll take a look at the calendar with the town manager to see if next week makes the most sense for us to pick back up bylaws, given that I think we're getting a budget presentation next week. But it does make sense to push the draft board committee handbook to next week, for sure. So if we can take some time over the week and review that handbook, the draft, and any comments we can compile, and just, that may shorten our conversation next week. All right.
Mr. Chair, I may be out of town next week.
Okay.
If I am, I may be out, we won't, I'll know by the end of this week.
Okay. All right. Okay. Any, any other scheduling concerns over the next? I know Tom goes into effect in, in February, but any other scheduling concerns over this month? No?
Not that I know of.
All right. Okay. Upcoming meetings, we're meeting next, the next two weeks, January the 16th, January the 23rd. Again, we do have a couple things we're pushing in the 16th onto our agenda, so we're going to wrap up here. Any public comments this evening from the public, Mr. Passios?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Passios. Yeah. Jeffries, excuse me. It's Passios, 56 White Street, let's see if I can get my face in the picture here. I asked this question at a recent school committee meeting also, and I'm wondering, you know, there's always talk about the 10% insurance bump. A few years ago, we created a insurance line item with, at the time, excess funds as a buffer against increases like this. Does that line item still exist, and do we have a decent amount of money in that line item?
You're, you're talking the healthcare stabilization to the town manager.
Correct, yes. Thank you.
We used a portion of that last, for this current year's budget, because of significant increase in health insurance this year, and there's about $101,000 left in that account.
Okay, so there's a little bit of a cushion, but it's not really significant, that was bad?
Not much, yeah, that line item.
Good.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Passios. Happy New Year, good to see you. Any other public comments from the public? All right. Public comments from the town manager this evening?
None, just that I want to also thank the DPW for all the work they did this weekend, those are really long days, and continuous hours for them. So I want to thank them for all their work, and they're out there tonight as well, and so I really appreciate the work that they do for the town. And thank you, Sleckman and Emke for bringing up the National Law Enforcement Day, so they are public safety people as well.
Thank you. Any remaining public comments from the board? I will echo the thanks to the DPW. You know, I'm, I typically, we have a couple residential customers, more than a couple, few residential customers that we provide snow removal services to, and so, you know, I'm generally out during all the snow events, and I get to see all the great work that DPW does firsthand. And Lunenburg consistently throughout storms is always the best roads around, and that's comparing it to all of our surrounding communities. Generally, we have to get into devens before we can find snow removal, that's not quite on par, but that's, that's even in the same ballpark. So just want to extend those kudos to the team at DPW that does all that work, Bill Bernard, the superintendent down there who also oversees a lot of this stuff. And then to the town manager for your budgeting support, making sure that we're in a position where, you know, our roads, the condition of our roads is certainly something that we pride ourselves on, we know a lot of residents commute to the Boston area, to Concord, Lexington area, down to Worcester, and so the passability of our roads, you know, Lancaster Rav being snowy, is, is, is the difference between about 15 minutes for many people. And so just want to extend that thanks to you, the town manager, DPW director, and the full DPW team as well. All right. Thank you all for the abbreviated meeting this evening. Due to, due to the weather, again, we'll meet again next week, 7:00 PM, no change, and if there is a change in the future, I will be sure to communicate with the members in advance to verify that it works for all prior to going ahead and just scheduling it.
Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Any additional discussion? All right. We have a motion to adjourn, Mr. Alonso.
Aye, and I will caution everybody, please drive carefully, the roads are in between, like, not super powerful, but not really clean, so please drive safely home, everyone.
Thank you. Sleckman, Emke?
Aye.
Sleckman, LaFranco?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. The time is 8:01.